I'm not ready. It's still, I'm not ready, I'm in it all.
Close enough, sixteen oh hundred.
All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to begin here. If you can assure your cellphones are off or on silent, council members ensure your microphones are turned on. Today is Monday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Today's regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council, but before we begin our regular legislative meeting, we do have individual committee meetings this evening, and we're going to start with City Properties, Parks, Recreation with Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six oh one, in council chambers, called the City Parks, Properties and Rec Committee. All council members are present, and those noted. We have requests for some new legislation. We have a letter from Stacy Carr, Planning Director, requesting legislation to rescind ordinance fifty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five emergency wording, and one reading requested. Also, that please refer to planning. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to call for this and send it to Planning, and we'll hold all questions for the Planning Department, for Planning Committee. Do I have a motion to call this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. We have another letter from, uh...
Chair, need to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have another letter from Stacy Carr, Planning Director, requesting legislation to approve the sale of partials number zero one dot zero five six six four for a dollar a square foot, and partial number zero one dot five six six six, which is the wall, for a dollar, for a total price of two thousand four hundred and one dollars, emergency wording and one reading requested. And also, please refer to planning. So we're gonna hold our questions for Planning. Do I have a motion to call this out of committee?
I'll make that. Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I get a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have a third letter from Stacy Carr, Planning Director, requesting legislation to sell, convey, dispose of, or transfer to a third party any commercial or industrial property deemed no longer needed for municipal purposes without the need for competitive bidding, emergency wording and one reading requested. Also, refer to planning. Can I get a motion to send this to Planning?
Can I ask you a question first?
Sure.
Chuck, did I see an email? You asked, like, is there a cost to this, maybe?
No, that email refers to the next piece of legislation with Todd Shreve.
Is there a cost to getting rid?
Well, we're not, this is just in case that they want to sell.
Okay.
The other one is, we're throwing stuff away.
That's right. Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. This one, just for everybody's knowledge there, when we pulled the other one and said this...
Correct.
This is the first step that we missed, so that's what this one is.
Okay, thank you. I will make that motion, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Get a vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Motion passes. We have no pending legislation. I'm sorry. I skipped this. We have a letter from Todd Shreve, our Director of Public Service. He's requesting legislation to dispose of city property which is located in the Wygant Building, emergency wording requested. He sent a request in letter form. Has everyone seen it and read it? Basically, we got a bunch of junk that we've been storing, three-legged chairs and, you know, things without cords and things of that nature, and Todd wants to start throwing that stuff away. There is going to be somewhat of a cost. We're using city employees in dumpsters.
Oh.
I don't know if it's going to be all at once, or we're going to slowly, here's...
I mean, yeah, there won't be any nominal costs, other than, like you said, time and materials, to have somebody bring a dump truck down, we'll probably load it in the dump truck and take it, but we have, we have twenty-yard dumpsters at the street garage, rather than fill the dumpster up behind the building. It makes more sense to load it into a truck and then put it into the larger dumpster, so...
And you can use tobacco and smash that stuff down, so at least we'll get capacity out of it.
And like Mr. Easterling said, it's, you know, it's chairs that were broken, it's desks, there's some filing cabinets, there's, there's stuff that just, it made its way up there to be outside, out of mind for so many years, and so we just, we need to start purging a lot of those, because it's stuff that we don't want to move to the new building when we move down the street.
Can I suggest we get a city holiday for all the department heads who caused this? They could go up there and clean it one day a year. Any other questions or remarks from the committee? From the board, the body, the gallery? With that, can I get a motion to call this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have no pending legislation. Open this up for miscellaneous discussion, if anyone has any, anything they'd like to talk about. Anyone in the gallery? With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. At six oh eight, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Easterling. Next up is Public Welfare and Safety with Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today's date's June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, six oh eight PM. I'll call the Public Welfare and Safety Committee to order. We're in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mr. Easterling, co-chair, Ms. Gerhart, Mr. Greer. All council members are present, and guests noted on my sheet. We have one request for legislation. A letter from Mr. Robert A. Incravati, Court Administrator, requesting legislation to enter into contract with Royce U.S. Protection Service, further known as Tenable Protective, for a one-year period starting July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Do I have any questions? This would be for Court Security, the gentleman that sits out front and runs the metal detector. Any questions? Can I get a motion to call for it, please?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, pending legislation, we have ordinance number seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-five, which is the Chief Morver from the Police Department requesting legislation to appropriate fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the inappropriate budget of the general fund to the Police Department capital budget for the purchase of an outfitted Ford Explorer. I need to amend this. On my agenda sheet, it says fifty-seven thousand. On the request letter, it's fifty-seven thousand five hundred. So can I get a motion to amend that? And then we'll refer it to Finance.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. We have nothing else. Any comments from my committee? Comments from other council members, the gallery? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We are adjourned at six ten PM.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up is Rules Marketing and Development, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to bring the Rules Marketing and Development Committee to order. It is Monday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is six ten PM, and we are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mrs. Beck, Mr. Heidig, and President Greer. All other council members, as noted on my sheet, and others in the gallery. I have one new request for legislation, a letter from Councilman Monty Harris, Ward Six, requesting legislation to amend Barberton City ordinance one zero six zero dot zero two B, to read as follows. All trash and receptacle containers must be removed from the city right of way and placed behind the front of the building line within twenty-four hours of trash collection. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Well, seeing none, can I have a motion to call for it?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow. So, well, we're getting out of here early tonight, boys. So, tonight, in our legislation night, we will be going through the charter amendments, and we will be voting on those to become resolutions. Are there any that you guys want to talk about now? Because whenever we go to vote, you can just make a remark. Is there any conversations, any questions?
I don't have any. I just want to come up here in case someone asks me something, I have the draft.
I appreciate that.
I got one.
Mr. Easterling.
So, I'll ask specific. The charter wants to get rid of our at-large, based on population. I'm not against that, going to the people for vote, but I don't think losing at-large is the right way to go.
Okay.
I'll say, if you have an issue with your councilman, you need a second-tier someone to call, other than the mayor, you know, as a buffer, you kind of need someone who's neutral. If, if we do it, I would suggest maybe changing the amount of wards, redoing the map, and even like Norton, which, they, they have their own president who's also a ward member.
Right.
So we could still be seven odd and still have wards, but have maybe three at-large instead of two. That's just, I think we need at-large, period. I mean, I, if I have a trouble with Monty, it'd be nice that I know I can go talk to, you know, Mr. Heidig.
Correct.
Because not everyone's going to get along or agree with whatever their councilman is doing for him, so... And it deflects a lot of conversation to the mayor that he doesn't need to, you know, if they're calling, you know, there's stuff that he shouldn't have to answer. So I just, that's my, my idea on, if you want to get rid of some council members, don't get rid of at-large.
Yes. So, Mrs. Miller, we're voting on it as it's typed before us?
Correct. That would have, you know, you could ask for a different, you could ask for different language, and I can draft that, but right now, that's what's there.
This is how we're voting then, tonight?
Yeah.
Is what's there? Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. No, I apologize, I didn't write down the ORC code, and I don't know if Director Miller can verify this on the fly. It's, if we don't have something in our charter, it deflects to ORC codes, correct?
Uh huh, correct.
We don't have a mechanism in our charter on how to add council back, and I know when the Charter Review Commission said, you know, we could always add them back. We don't have in the charter how to do that. Again, I wish I would have wrote down the ORC code, but since we don't have that mechanism and punt to them, it stated that you can, a municipal legislative body can increase by one member per every ten thousand more people added. So if we were to erase two seats, whether it be ward or at-larges, the ORC says that we would have to have twenty thousand more people in this city to gain those back. So we'd be going from twenty-five thousand to forty-five thousand just to get two, be a ward or at-large. It also stated the minimums for a municipal legislative body, which Norton follows, the minimum is four wards and three at-larges.
Seven, yes.
For no less than seven. But I just, I don't think, the more I read into it, that the Charter Review Commission, while I respect what they did, and I do see where they're coming from, we don't have the mechanism to add them back, and I don't see us having room in this city to almost double our population to get the two back. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerhart, is it okay if I just go through and just make sure that there's no question about anything? Okay, so, page four on mine, printed, the detachment language is okay. Then the next one, which was section three oh four, new E, that is commencing with the general election held in two thousand and twenty-seven, the mayor shall be limited to three consecutive terms. I mean, you guys can discuss it more, I just kind of need to know if there's anything that's out.
Is that what we're doing later to vote, or you're doing our vote right now?
No, I, I didn't know if anyone talked about any that you just wanted out. I thought I got those, but I'm just confirming.
Like the ones that you said would be switched over.
Well, I know, you took out the ones that we were going to make ordinance, as you already removed those.
That, you, for sure, it's gone, then. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I read through it. You got rid of them.
Okay.
Mrs. Thompson.
I have a question, because we talked about our law director having the ability to change, you know...
Editorial changes with the approval of council.
Yeah, so I feel like there's quite a few of these that fall under that, you know, as far as adding or detach, he shall, things like that. So it just makes me wonder if those are things that we can mix, because this is a long list to send to the ballot.
Mr. Heidig.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director, but when a law director of a municipality has that authority, she, he or she cannot change the functionality of the charter. So, for instance, where it says he, she can change it to the title of the position, but as far as cleaning up and removing things or anything else, if it changes the functionality, am I correct?
Right. It seems like detached just seems super simple, but that is an actual process under revised code of how you take a piece of barbed and detach it to another municipality. We don't have that in there, and so the attorney, Holly, Holly, whose name is gone in my head right now, she does primarily real estate law, so that was, she was like, we need to have that in there. So that was, I, you know, was very appreciative of that, but I kind of see what you're saying. Detached seems pretty simple, because it's kind of like everything else, but it's a separate process.
I got you. I just feel like this is a lot to put on the ballot. I don't think it's smart to group it all together, because I think it won't pass, but I also think if we separate it and have however many there are...
Or like, over twenty?
Yeah. I think it's a bit much, so, I just think if we can kind of narrow it down, it makes sense to me, so...
I know a question I had, Mrs. Miller. If you're looking at pages eight, qualifications for the Director of Public Service, and then nine, qualifications for the Director of Public Safety, and then ten, the qualifications for the Director of Finance, let's say you, let's say something, God forbid, happens to Mr. Shreve, and he's no longer with our city, and we have somebody phenomenal come along with four years minimum, we just, we cannot accept them, because this is a hard, fast rule in our charter. Would we be hurting ourselves by making it this way, or...
Again, the qualification section mimic the job description that allows it to be in the pay grade it is.
Okay.
So if you change this, and the job description doesn't change, and that person doesn't have the qualifications under the job description, I mean, I suppose it's not, I mean, it's not monumental, but what would happen is we'd have to regrade the position.
Okay.
So that was the idea, the planning, or the Charter Review Commission wanted those in there.
Okay.
Those are theirs, blue is them, right?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. In her instance, are we still able to hire somebody with an interim label until, say, somebody's one year away from five years qualified? Can we still slot the interim?
Yes. That's in the, that's in the pay plan, right, Jamie? Interims? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that sounds good. Are there any other questions? So, to Mrs. Thompson's point, is that where we're going to be eliminating some things as we vote tonight, President Greer?
Yep.
To slim it down?
That's the idea.
And then, after it becomes a resolution and comes back, we could actually then continue to take things out so that we're not causing the voter fatigue, or we need...
It's your show.
Am I understanding it correctly?
Correct. That's my understanding.
That was not my understanding. I thought, once your committee votes, that that would be, are you guys voting as, voting out of committee and then voting at multiple quarters?
Well, it's already left my committee.
Okay.
This was just the chance...
So then, once it passes, then it's in?
So once we pass it as a resolution, that's what goes to the Board of Elections?
Yeah, so are you going through readings?
Yeah, I don't know.
As a resolution?
I don't know, I wouldn't, you have three weeks, or three, six, thank you, commission, six weeks to have full discussion on it.
Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. The idea we had tonight was, the twenty-five to thirty of them, we were going to take a floor vote to see which ones we would all send to you to write drafts.
Okay.
That way, if there's thirty of them, we may say, we may only upvote twenty of them to send to you, and the other ten die.
Okay. Does that seem like a good plan?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
We were merely taking the time in committee to have discussion, because once we start voting, you can only make remarks.
Yeah.
So that's why this was the last chance, if you had a question or you needed better clarification, now was the time to ask it.
It's legit, just blowing right out.
So, last, last call. Anybody questioning anything? Everybody's feeling good? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. So, the next thing that we have was for a council rule change, and Mr. Heidig and I spoke before, and I believe he got with you, Mr. Easterling, he will be typing up all the council rule changes that we've already discussed. If you have any that you didn't bring up but yet, get them over to him, and then he will get that to us before our break in August, so we all have a chance to review and make any changes. Well, no pending legislation, any miscellaneous discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at six twenty-four PM.
Thanks, Ms. Gerhart. Next up is City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities, I would like to call this meeting to order today, June ninth. We're in council chambers, all members of my committee are present, Jennifer Hager, myself as chair, Emily Beck, and Jessica Greer. We have one piece of legislation to call for tonight, and we have no pending legislation. We have a letter from Todd Shreve, Director of Public Service, requesting legislation allowing a mayor or his designate need to amend the natural gas supply agreement and enter into agreement with IGS Energy. Please see the request, and the reason for this is just for a lower rate, so it makes sense. Do I have a motion to call for this piece of legislation?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sabrina. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Do we have any miscellaneous discussions for Utilities? Yes, sir, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Merritt, did you ever hear anything back from the energy companies about the lines with the constant power outages?
I was going to go over some of that in my office.
Thank you.
Dan McGalory? During that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Senator. We are adjourned at six twenty-six. Is that our time?
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Last but not least, Finance and Personnel, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, six twenty-six PM, here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heidig, Mr. Griffin, and President Greer. All other council members are also present, as well as guests, as noted on my sheet. First up, we have the presentation of the finance report from May of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Plankford, do it.
Thank you. Starting off with the Health Insurance Fund. The revenues for the month of May were just shy of four hundred and forty-three thousand. Our expenditures for that month was just over four hundred and forty-one thousand. Made our net year-to-date a negative one hundred and thirty-one, just over one hundred and thirty-one thousand. Moving on to the income tax fund, our estimate for the month of May was just over one point five million. We collected just over one point nine million. I will say, we did get our, what they call the reconciliation, so every year, so during the year, RITA will withhold three percent of our income tax, as their, like, administrative fees, and then every year around this time, they will reconcile. So they'll go back, see what they actually spent for the year, and divvy it up, figure out the true cost to each entity that's involved with RITA. So, that came through this past month. We got back three hundred thousand, little over three hundred thousand dollars from RITA this past year. It effectively made the administrative costs for RITA point nine nine percent, so less than one percent. It effectively made the administrative costs for Rita 0.99%, so less than 1% of our income tax is going to pay for administrative fees. So that amounted to $165,000 essentially is what we paid in administrative fees to Rita last year to administer our income tax for the city of Arlington. So with that, just note that actual is kind of skewed because it had that one large dollar amount coming in. We are over our estimates for the year by about almost 17%. We did transfer 2 million from the general fund, or from the income tax fund to the general fund. It's leaving us with just shy of $7 million left to transfer for the rest of this year. So we'll continue to work at that as the collections come in through the, throughout the year. Looking at the statement of cash receipts and dispersments, a few funds in the negative. First one and three, well, all of them were ones that I've talked about previously before at some point in time. First one, City Grant Fund. That is the sludge the watering building at the wastewater treatment plant. That project, I do know, is getting ready to finish up. So we should be paying the final invoices, getting the final drawdowns done on that project, which then should get that fund out of the negative. The next fund in the negative is the FEMA fund. That is the flood mitigation grants and the dam grant that we have for the design. Hopefully, the design work will get done here shortly. We can bid that and then start implementing phase two of the dam grant, which would be the actual construction. So that fund will probably be in the negative for the foreseeable future just because of the, the amount of the, especially the construction part of the dam grant. It's going to be a large, large amount there. Next fund in the negative is the CDBG fund. Like I've talked to you all about, it's a federal HUD program. So once we expend the money, we can draw down the money. Next fund is on the next page in the negative is the Health Insurance Fund. That is just due to the encum, the encumbrance that's open for our healthcare through Summit County and paying that monthly invoice. So as years, as months go by, we'll get that slowly out of the negative. And then whatever we don't use in that PO will close at the end of the year. So to put the money back into the fund as well. The next fund in the negative is the Internal Cost Allocation Fund. That is where we pay the fuel out of and then we charge back to the departments. So once we start charging back to departments, that fund will get out of the negative as well. Looking at the last three months of activity on the next page, you'll notice the general fund did increase by about 414,000. That's just, it's been slowly increasing every month since the month of March. You'll notice it has increased slowly over the time. Special revenue funds decreased slightly from last month to this month, just, just slightly though. It wasn't a big decrease. Enterprise funds, that, those have decreased as well. A lot of that is just stemming from the encumbrances outstanding. You've noticed the encumbrances outstanding increase, which is drawing down that unencumbered cash balance. And then all other funds, it's all like the normal 300 to 400,000 dollar increase. So that's slowly getting out of the hole. Like I said, as time goes on and we do those chargebacks to the other departments for the healthcare, that will get out of the negative here in the next few months. Looking at May of last year to May of this year, you'll notice the general fund is down by about 543,000. Couple different things attribute to that. I mean, you have, expenditures are up quite a bit from this time last year. A lot of that just has to deal with, we just settled the union contracts, all the union contracts. So in the month of May, we did do the retro pay to all city employees that were entitled to it. So that kind of skews the month of May when compared to last year because last year we didn't do retro pay in May. We didn't have retro pay at all last year. Yeah. We didn't have retro pay at all last year. So it, it's skewing the dispersments for the month of May. Special revenue funds, if you look at that, those are up slightly. They're up by about 850,000. Combination of a couple of things there. One, we haven't transferred as much as we did last year at this time. We're about $200,000 less in transfers. But we also, our encumbrances outstanding have went down over time. I mean, we're down quite a bit in the encumbrances outstanding. Enterprise funds has went up slightly. A lot of that has to deal with our receipts. Our receipts are a lot higher than they were this time last year. And then all other funds, it's in the negative. Well, it, it's down, it's in the negative just for the main fact one. We have the healthcare holiday, December of '24, so that's not showing in here. So that's lowering our cash balance. And then you have a combination of, the healthcare rates went up, so our POs that we had to open for Summit County is a lot larger than it's been in years past. So a combination of those things is putting that down a little bit, little bit. With that, any questions? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Plankford. How close are we to being pre-BNW exit? Are we there or above it or what's the status?
So I mean, if you look at our, if you look at income tax as a whole, income tax is up actually. Thankfully, a couple employers have been doing very well since, basically since BMW left. I think we have one more payment left from Akron. I think it's one more payment for the final year of that agreement. It won't be a lot that will come from Akron on that payment because it was like a sliding scale where like the first year you got 50%, 40, 30, 20, 10. We'd only be in the 10%. So we're not going to get much from that. But if you look at our income tax just the past five years, it has increased.
It has increased, yes.
Yeah. We're, we're past what we were with BMW. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. With no questions, I have a motion to call this out.
Motion.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. For pending legislation, we have ordinance number 69-2025, title appropriation Finance Department. This is appropriating $6 million from the unappropriated item of the City Hall Justice Center Project Fund to the capital budget of the City Hall Justice Center Project Fund and declaring an emergency. Also, ordinance 70-2025, this would be transferring $6 million from the general fund to the newly established City Hall Justice Center Project Fund and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks on either of those? And then ordinance number 71-2025, as Mr. Harris was saying, this is appropriating, should be $57,500 from the unappropriated budget of the general fund to the Police Department's Capital Fund for the purchase of an outfitted Ford Explorer and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to amend this to the correct amount of 57,500?
So.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
All right.
Next, we have ordinance number 74-2025, title enter into contract, Wicker Insurance Company. So it authorized the mayor or his designee to enter into contract with Wicker Insurance Company for a one-year renewal of the city's property, vehicle, equipment, and liability insurance and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks? I will go ahead and open it up for miscellaneous, for finance and personnel. Anything from my committee or the body? Anything from the gallery? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
We are adjourned at 6:38.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes your individual committee meetings this evening. I need five minutes to prepare and then we'll begin our regular legislative meeting.
Oh, we don't have to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to give you some. Sorry.
All right, let's go ahead and then begin. Today is Monday, June 9, 2025. It's a regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council. I call this meeting order at 6:46 PM. Please stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Mr. Griffin.
I want the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and opportunity to serve this community. Give us wisdom and knowledge to be fair and impartial. Protect all our first responders and our men and women and our armed services. In your blessed name, let us say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Clerk, please call a roll.
President.
President?
Mr. Heidick.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Easterling.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mrs. Beck.
Here.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Approve all the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, as presented. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting from Tuesday, May 27, 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes adopted. Petitions and claims?
We have none.
Matters requested?
We have all the requests.
Thank you. Citizens addressing council?
We have eleven of these emails, but I can't see them.
That's fine. Yep.
Okay, I received this letter today from Kyle Braiding, who is the general foreman of the street department. Dear councilmen, I am writing to express serious concern about the proposal to close the city of Barberton's Building Department. While I understand there may be frustrations with the current case of permitting process eliminating the department entirely would have far more harmful consequences, both immediate and long term, than any benefits it may promise. As a former property maintenance inspector with the Barberton Building Department for eight years, I saw firsthand how critical it is to have a knowledgeable local building commissioner available. Residents and contractors rely on timely, accurate guidance, and losing that local expertise would make it significantly harder to get clear answers, approved plans, or resolve issues quickly and efficiently. This decision would also directly harm the effectiveness of the property maintenance enforcement. Inspectors depend on the building commissioner not only during inspections, but also in legal proceedings where their professional expertise can make or break a case. Removing that support compromises both the short-term enforcement and the long-term improvement of our neighborhoods. I understand the concern about permitting delays. However, I also know from experience that just a few years ago, the department was much more efficient. With the right staffing, leadership, and support, it can return to being a strong, responsive part of city government. Disnailing the building side of the department will only weaken, not strengthen, our city's ability to maintain and improve properties. If the true goal is to improve property maintenance, eliminating the building function will do the opposite. I urge you to reconsider this thought and instead focus on rebuilding a department that serves residents, supports inspectors, and fosters responsible development in Barberton. Respectfully, Kyle Braiding, General Foreman, Street Department, City of Barberton.
Thank you. Clerk, were there any other letters?
No.
All right, thank you. First reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 69-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Appropriations finance department. An ordinance appropriating $6 million from the unappropriated item of the City Hall Justice Center project fund to the capital budget of the City Hall Justice Center project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call a roll for suspension.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 69-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to adopt ordinance number 69-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 70-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Transfer finance department. An ordinance transferring $6 million from the general fund to the newly established City Hall Justice Center project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 70-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to adopt ordinance number 70-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Ms. Gerhardt?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 70-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Transfer finance department. An ordinance transferring $6 million from the general fund to the newly established City Hall Justice Center project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 70-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Transfer finance department. An ordinance transferring $6 million from the general fund to the newly established City Hall Justice Center project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 72-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 72-2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that this is just adding it to our codified ordinances. This isn't ordering us to hire one. This is just giving us the ability to do so at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidick. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 73-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to adopt ordinance number 73-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 73-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck. Title: Entering new contract Construction King Incorporated. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter a new contract with Construction King Incorporated in the amount of $913,682 for the concrete paving project and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 72-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 72-2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that this is just adding it to our codified ordinances. This isn't ordering us to hire one. This is just giving us the ability to do so at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidick. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 70-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Transfer finance department. An ordinance transferring $6 million from the general fund to the newly established City Hall Justice Center project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to adopt ordinance number 75-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Since we have the amounts, are we going two meetings or one?
Councilwoman Thompson.
I knew we were holding it for two if we didn't have the amounts.
Which we do now.
So you're going to do one?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking. Okay. Ordinance number 74-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Entering new contract Wickard Insurance Company. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into contract with Wickard Insurance Company for a one-year renewal of the city's property, vehicle, equipment, and liability insurance and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion. Oh my goodness. Move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidick to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Heidick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 72-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 72-2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that this is just adding it to our codified ordinances. This isn't ordering us to hire one. This is just giving us the ability to do so at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidick. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call a roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidick?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 74-2025.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to adopt ordinance number 74-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 75-2025 presented by Mr. Hyatt. Title: Amending Barber and Codified Ordinances, Chapter 1454, Vacant Property Registration Program. An ordinance amending Chapter 1454 Vacant Property Registration Program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by Section 5.10 of the Barber and City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Hyatt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barber and City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 75-2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Hyatt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 75-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
This ends the first reading.
Second reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 63-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Amending Ordinance Number 47-2021, Compensation for Elected Officials. An ordinance amending ordinance number 47, 2021, to establish a compensation for certain elected officials and compensation procedures for the next four years, declaring an emergency. This is the second reading. The first reading was on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, and the third and final reading will be on Monday, June 23, 2025. This ends the second reading.
Third reading of ordinances and resolutions.
We have none.
Appointments.
We have none.
All right, fun stuff. Miscellaneous and unfinished business. During this miscellaneous and unfinished business, it has been requested by the Rules Committee that we take a vote on the floor to see what makes the cut for these charter changes. Now, when I say that this, what we're going to be voting on tonight is going to be sending these changes individually, or as we vote on them, back to the committee, but as a resolution to continue the formal process of our legislation process. It will be in the committee, then it will go three readings, just like a normal piece of legislation. This is just to filter out what we have, or what we want to move forward collectively as a body, since there are so much. Now, since there are so much, I would like to ask all council members to keep in mind that of the options that are on the table for keeping or putting all this into one or separating it, voter fatigue is a really real thing. And also keep in mind that a lot of these are once, some of them are needed, but there are some things that are truly needed. So, the idea of this is to cut the slack off of these. We can push them forward, all of them forward, and then committee will have to do it in committee, but this is giving the body a chance to vote on these. Now, I am going to go through each one of these as I see it on the paper, and I would like to ask Director Miller and Ms. Gerhardt that if I mess up, or don't, there's multiple things that are layered here, that if I'm missing something, or it needs to be clear to just speak up, right?
And I'm only standing here so I can write.
Before we take this vote...
Oh, I was gonna...
Yeah, the ma, I know.
Did you want me to put it in the poll?
Yeah, I'm getting to that. Yeah. Thank you. Mayor?
Point of clarification, you said anything approved in this miscellaneous section will go back to the committee?
Correct.
For another vote, then back to full council?
Correct. As, this is going to, this is a body vote to go as a resolution back to the planning.
To rules?
Yeah, sorry, the Rules Committee.
And then Rules Committee will vote as a committee, and then it'll go to full council?
Correct. As a regular piece of resolution to go to the ballot. Any, since it is on the floor, any one of the council members can make a motion, any one of the council members can second. If there are, if there isn't a motion or a second, then we'll just drop it and we'll move on. Again, if you want to say something during remarks, keep it as a remark, not a discussion. You'll have plenty of time, if it does make it through, to talk about it in the committee and on the floor as well. We'll... We will be taking a roll call vote on this for each individual one, just to kind of streamline it.
Never mind.
What you got?
Nothing, never mind.
Sure? It's important that we all understand this.
No, no, you already...
That's why you wait till the end. Just saying. All right, so let's go ahead and begin. I'm going to try to keep this like the page number, but really it's going to be the article number and then the paragraph or the section. So, for the first one up, is there a motion to amend Section 1.01 Name and Boundaries to add or detached?
Motion?
Mr. Hyatt, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to add or detach to Section 1.01 Name and Boundaries. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on that?
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Thank you. Just for another clarification, this is a simple vote, so we will need five for one to pass. All right, next up is Page 6, if you have that. This is adding Section E, well, adding E to Section 3.04 Vacancies in the Office of Mayor. E stating, "Commencing with the general election in the year 2027, the mayor shall be limited to three consecutive terms." Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Harris, is there a second? Mrs. Thompson?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Clerk, our, a motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Are there any remarks for this? Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder, the President said the simple majority moves this forward. If this does move forward on this vote, the resolution to go to the Board of Elections according to the Charter would still need a supermajority at the time, so it would be the six of eight. This simple majority moving on, five of eight would kill it if the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for your point of clarification. Clerk, can you call the roll on that?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
No.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
All right, required five votes, so it's five yea, three nay. That moves on. All right, we'll move to Page 7, Article 4 Administrative Departments. In here, we have the second paragraph, so Section 4.01 General Provisions, we are removing the second paragraph, any department head as defined by ordinance number 187, 2004. That's the second, entire second paragraph will be removed from this section. Mrs. Thompson?
I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'll see what happens when I let it run free. The motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Harris. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
All right, we'll move forward with that. All right, on Page 8, Section 4.02 Department of Public Service, there's a few things in here. In the first paragraph, we will add, he shall manage, or this is, yeah, Department of Public Service, will add, "He shall manage and control construction, site storm water runoff control, post-construction storm water management, and new development and redevelopment. Discharge detection and elimination, pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations, public education and outreach regarding storm water management and public involvement and participation in, or precipitation involving storm water." Now, I'm reading all of these, so again, this isn't informal thing, well, it's not informal, we're taking a vote on it, but I'm just kind of reading them out. Is there a motion to add this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to add the section to section, or this paragraph to Section 4.0. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Next up on that same page is adding subsection A, class, or, yeah, classifications, or qualifications, I'm sorry, qualifications for the public service, or Director of Public Service. Is there a motion to add this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to add subsection A qualifications. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on this?
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
All right. That will move forward with seven yeses. All right, the next section is on, man, the same page, we'll be removing section, or subsection B. This is the Division of Building Inspection, there shall be, well, this is the removing of the Building Department, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Gerhardt?
You are correct.
Okay. So this is striking out subsection B on Section 4.02 Department of Public Service. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mr. Harris to remove or strike out subsection B, Division of Building Inspection, from Section 4.02 Department of Public Service. Are there any remarks?
Mr. Griffin?
Clerk, can you call the roll on this? I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think that it's worth having more conversations, looking into some of Kyle's points, considering the revenue loss that we would have, and just everybody doing their due diligence to talk to people and make a good decision on this. So if it gets through tonight and it's just a resolution, we still have conversations that need to be had about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
No.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
All right. We have five to three, yeas have it. Okay, I'm going to need some clarification, actually, never mind, not on this one yet, Director. We'll move on to subsection C, Division of Engineering. There is some amendments to this, where the city engineer shall be registered, registered state of Ohio Professional Civil Engineer, and who shall be appointed by, striking out the mayor, and adding Director of Public Service. Well, this will also be amending that position to be a classified position. Is there a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Is there a second, Mrs. Thompson?
I'll second.
All right, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Thompson to amend subsection C, Division of Engineering. Are there any remarks, comments? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
All right, six yeas, two nays, yeas have it on that. We'll move down to Section D, Division of Utilities, pretty much the same thing, striking out, the position will be appointed by the Director, or striking out the mayor and adding Director of Public Service to this, and making this a classified position as well. Is there a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Ms. Hager to amend subsection D, Division of Utilities. Are there any comments? Clerk, can you call the roll on that?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
All right, six yeas, two nays, yeas have it. Moving on, this is marked gray and my, Director, is that an actual?
Yes, because that is, from the last meeting we had, it was suggested instead of having a separate position of Director of Public Information Officer, so to speak, it was a separate position, and it was requested in the meeting, remember, spread to put under the duties of the Director of Public Safety. So that, I made it gray because it was there, but it moved and it changed, so that was kind of how I thought it might work.
Okay, well, we'll move along with this. All right, this is adding, under Section 4.03 Department of Public Safety, this adds, "The Director of Public Safety shall develop and implement a citywide communication strategy, manage media relations, including press releases and interviews, maintain the city website, social media, and public communication channels, coordinate messaging across departments, lead public engagement efforts, and city-sponsored events, create communication materials, and oversee crisis communication planning and execution." Is there a motion to add that?
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Mrs. Beck to add that section, or that paragraph to Section 4.03 Department of Public Safety. Are there any remarks? Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Given the description of all this in there, I still believe that this could be a position created not through the Charter, but through ordinance. Thank you.
Are there any other remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Hyatt?
No.
All right, five yeas, or five yes, three no, so that does move on. All right, under Section 4.03 Department of Public Safety, right below that on Page 9, this is adding qualifications to the Director of Public Safety, that they shall have the following minimum qualifications, a bachelor's degree in management, public administration, or related discipline, and shall have a minimum of five years operating, managing, or administrating public safety personnel or equivalent. The Director of Public Safety shall be selected on the basis of their administrative and execute, or executive qualifications. Is there a motion to add Section A? I'll ask again, is there a motion to add Section A?
Are you about ready to point out what I'm about to point out?
Yep, for sure, yeah. So, A, let's just, I think that you could continue on the blue, which is the qualifications of the Director of Public Safety, but it was a paragraph before that I did not do properly.
Okay, so that will be a min, basically adding to or swapping out?
No, I would just go to the qualifications Director of Public Safety, and we'll go back one paragraph in a second.
Okay, well, we...
So it's not marked anything, it should have been marked gray.
Oh, I got you.
Because we're adding that kind of job description to the Director of Public Safety, it increases the qualifications because it's a role we're putting under them.
The actual, under the first qualification, so one qualifications on my sheet, that should have, we should be voting on that too as well.
That, well, that's kind of, maybe I intentionally didn't do it right, but I doubt that. If you're having qualifications for the Director of Public Safety, and you add qualifications for the Director of Public Information, they should be one qualification paragraph. But then you're saying they should have a bachelor's degree in management and public administration for the safety director, but for the public information officer, it's a bachelor's degree in communications. So if you're asking the safety director to do the communications, you have to pick whether you want them to be management or you want to be communications degrees. So, I didn't, that was my error in not making that gray, which is what it should have been, but I think that you, in my opinion, you'd be better off doing blue first, which is the qualifications for the safety director, and then go back one for what should have been marked gray.
Okay. Thank you, Director. But that's not A qualif, like subsection A anymore, that's just qualifications.
Yeah, it should be just A. Correct.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to add this to Section 4.03?
I'll make that motion.
I'm going to just say this again, yeah. Thanks, Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Yes, blue first. Sorry, yes, it's marked on our paper, A, and qualifications. Is there a second?
I, can I have a, if you don't have this in there, you've made requirements for the Director of Public Safety to be in pay range something, and if you don't put this in this, Safety to be in pay range something, and if you don't put this in this, then it's not going to be in that pay range. So I'm just telling you that, whatever, if you decide.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. That's exactly why I wanted you guys to be here. All right, so, Ms. Gerhart, your motion first, and Mrs. Hager, second. All right, motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and second by Mrs. Hager to add qualifications for the public, or the Director of Public Safety. Are there any remarks?
I just wanna, this is, this is a recommendation of the Charter Review Commission to make it aligned with the Director of Public Service, so they're both in there. Just wanted to make sure you get that.
Thank you. Clerk, can you call the roll on that?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. We're gonna go back up one for the qualifications of the public, or Director of Public Information?
Correct. And the reason, what, it should have been gray, I moved that back over because I don't think I had a recommendation to strike that from the last time, because it was a separate position. I took the qual, the duties and put them in the paragraph of 4.03, and I think I probably just moved that over there because I didn't have direction on to delete it, so.
Okay, so since this is the Public Safety, and then this is stating that the Director of Public Information, is that following, are these qualifications still following under?
They, when it was a separate position, when the original intent was to move it into a separate position, that was the job, was the Director of Public Information, and those were the qualifications. When I moved the duties into the Director of Public Safety, I didn't have clarity on what anyone wanted to do with that section that was under a separate position. I, hearing what I'm hearing, I think you want to delete it because there is no position, because you put the duties under the Director of Public Safety.
Okay, so this, this section technically we would not want, sort of saying, under this.
Correct, yes. I think that was what I understood, but no one said delete it, so I had to put it in there.
Okay, legally, well, it wouldn't make sense to put it in this section right now.
Correct, but I didn't have direction to remove it, so I didn't.
I understand. This is on here, so I will read it, and we'll just run through this real fast. You guys all heard the Director's statement on here. Is there a motion for this? Is there a motion for this? All right, well, continue. Thank you, Director.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good. All right, page 10, under Section 4.04, Department of Finance, there is qualifications for the Finance Director. This is amending, and so the, it is, under subsection A, second paragraph, "The Director of Finance shall further have the following minimum qualifications." It used to say he shall be a person who has had at least two, well, currently says, he has, he shall be a person who has had at least two years' experience in corporate business, municipal, county, state, or federal finance in a management level, and will switch that up for knowledge of municipal accounting, taxation budgets, and financial control, and shall have a minimum of a bachelor's degree in accounting, finance, economics, or public administration from an accredited college or university. He shall have had at least five years of experience in accounting or finance from any of the following corporate business, or any of the following, corporate business, municipal, county, or federal entity prior to his or her election. Is there a motion to amend the minimum qualifications? Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and second by Mr. Harris to amend the qualifications for the Finance Director. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, moving on. Next page is 13. This is Article V, under Counsel, Section 5.02, Number and Terms. I believe this is removing the-
No, President Greer, are you on page 13?
There's one more.
You have one above that.
You got me, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, above section, or Article V on Counsel, this is still regarding the Law Director, Department of Law, towards the end of that subsection F, under the Charter Correction in Form Only, this is adding, or this will add, the language, "Law Director may make editorial corrections which shall be approved by resolution of the City of, or City Council." Is there a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. Motion was made by Mrs. Beck and second by Ms. Gerhart to add the language to the Department of Law to allow them to make editorial corrections, which is then approved by resolution by City Council. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on this, please?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, moving down on that page, Article V, Counsel, under Section 5.02, Number and Terms, again, this is amending this section, there's an amendment in this section, this is basically eliminating the at-large seats, am I correct, Ms. Gerhart?
That is correct.
That's what this language is for.
Yeah, that's correct, it came from the commission.
This is where it says six members, of whom shall be elected from wards and a president.
Just wanna make sure I'm like, saying the layman's term for all this. All right, is there a motion to amend Section 5.02, Number and Terms, for the blue? We still have some stuff in here. Is there a motion to amend this section? All right, seeing that, moving forward. Under that, there's also, looks like term limits, so to that section, 5.02, Number and Terms, the next section is adding language, convention with the general election of 2025, all council members and the President of Council shall be limited to three consecutive terms. If a member has been appointed to an unexpired term prior to the first elected term, or elected to succeed in an appointment, that time shall be considered-
Not be-
Sorry, I probably messed that up, but if a council member or President of Council, third elected term has expired, sorry, the member shall not be eligible for any vacancy in the expired position for a period of two years. So this is adding term limits to the council body and the council president to three elected terms. Mr. Harris?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, a motion was made by Mr. Harris and second by Mr. Hyde to add this language, term limits for council and council president to Section 5.02, Number and Terms. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, moving down on that page, Article V, Counsel, under Section 5.02, Number and Terms, again, this is amending this section, there's an amendment in this section, this is basically eliminating the at-large seats, am I correct, Ms. Gerhart?
That is correct.
That's what this language is for.
Yeah, that's correct, it came from the commission.
This is where it says six members, of whom shall be elected from wards and a president.
Just wanna make sure I'm like, saying the layman's term for all this. All right, is there a motion to amend Section 5.02, Number and Terms, for the blue? We still have some stuff in here. Is there a motion to amend this section? All right, seeing that, moving forward. Under that, there's also, looks like term limits, so to that section, 5.02, Number and Terms, the next section is adding language, convention with the general election of 2025, all council members and the President of Council shall be limited to three consecutive terms. If a member has been appointed to an unexpired term prior to the first elected term, or elected to succeed in an appointment, that time shall be considered-
Not be-
Sorry, I probably messed that up, but if a council member or President of Council, third elected term has expired, sorry, the member shall not be eligible for any vacancy in the expired position for a period of two years. So this is adding term limits to the council body and the council president to three elected terms. Mr. Harris?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, a motion was made by Mr. Harris and second by Mr. Hyde to add this language, term limits for council and council president to Section 5.02, Number and Terms. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Mr. Hager?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Mr. Hager?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Mr. Hager?
No.
All right, we have five yes, three no, that moves forward. All right, qualifications, Director Miller, that E is red on my paper, that does, is that just a no?
Nope, that is, if, if you stay with, excuse me, you have deleted on page eight, the division of pub, building inspection and the building commissioner, so that you would eliminate the building commissioner from the director, or from the BZBA.
Okay, so we need to read this in too?
President Greer, can I ask, I know we're supposed to make remarks, but just-
No, that's fine.
-a question for Mrs. Miller.
Clarification on this.
A clarification on this, please. Would these be two separate things? Because if this all went to the ballot, and then that didn't pass, the people wanted to keep a building department, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So could this be something that would have to be edited by the law director?
Yes, I, yes.
Instead of it being a line item?
Sure, yes.
Did that question make sense to the council?
Which means we have to read it in tonight to go back to-
No, make it an editorial change.
Well, you could ask for a motion in a second, like you did, if it failed for lack of a second. What she's saying is if, well, assuming the editorial, actually, I don't think it has, I think it, I would allow me to do it, if, if they, if the voters rejected I think it would allow me to do it, if if they, if the voters rejected the deletion of the Building Commissioner, it would automatically not delete it from the BZBA.
I got you.
That was a double negative. Sorry.
So we don't need to do anything with this? This is just noting, like, if we-
Well, you you could ask for a motion, it could fail for lack of a motion, if you want to do that, like you did with the other ones.
Okay. Is there a motion? So, next slide, sorry, and would be E qualifications for Director, for the Director of City Planning.
No, that's just making it E. Because a D is, that has to be E, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Would it make sense to add all these things in, like, one thing, rather than having multiple changes? I mean, if this is here, required for something else, if that passed, wouldn't it make sense to put all of that on the one thing?
It could, except they're not in the same place. So, but what I can do is, the next version, I'll give you a clean, a completely non-color-coded charter, and then give you the, what you voted out today on a piece of paper.
Okay.
And, Mr. President Greer?
Yeah.
Are you looking at E that's red?
I am.
Because we're talking about the pink highlight at the bottom of the page.
No, I'm talking about E.
I only changed E because it, if you add D, that-
Okay, you'll automatically change that.
Okay.
I got you. So, that doesn't need to be voted on, because if you have the right to change it, you can change it. All right, under section six point zero two, Board of Zoning and Building Appeals, this is striking out the Building Commissioner. Second paragraph, under A, the Director of City Planning, would, I'm assuming it's adding Director of City Planning, not the Building Commissioner?
No, on the BZBA, there is the Building Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
So if you delete, if you eliminate the Building Commissioner, he, that position can't be on the BZBA. But, as Mrs. Gerhart pointed out, I could do that. If if it, if the, again, double negative, if the deletion of the Building Commissioner failed, that would not be removed, it would stay there.
Okay, so we don't need, even need to move on this?
No.
Because it could be fixed.
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, this is what I was speaking with Ms. Gerhart about, like, a lot of this stuff, if one pat, one of that thing passes, we don't even need to entertain all of this. Okay. Page twenty-one, section six point zero three, Parks and Recreation Commission, it looks like we are, so, section A, Membership and Organizations, there is hereby established Parks and Recreation Commission, which shall consist of five members who are electors of the city, holding no other public office, and will be changing, and, or will be adding and, striking out three members?
It, yeah, it, it's, and stays, and then three members, right, because that was the thing where we had three, the other members were appointed by the Board of Ed. So, the Charter Commission just wanted all of them to be appointed by the mayor and approved by council.
So that's what this whole section is?
That's what that whole section is, yes.
The first, not not B, or is it B?
It's all in A.
Okay. All right, so, we'll just make a motion to move forward with that amendment, then, on sec, the entire section A.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Easterling? All right, a motion was made by Mr. Heideck and second by Mr. Easterling, to amend section six point zero three, Parks and Recreation Commission, to the recommendation of the commission, well, the Charter Review Commission. And they'll all be appointed by the mayor.
Yep, with approval of council, just like the other three.
Are there any remarks? Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, President Greer. I believe with as much as the parks and rec does with the schools, keeping somebody from the Board of Education on here would be pretty important, so-
That came, oh, that came from Mr. Harden, who's alternatively been the president of the Board of Education. So, he felt very strongly that they don't, if if there's something that they needed to be done, they could contact the schools. But, the requirement to have them appoint two people, they felt was onerous and not, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a school function, right?
Okay.
It's a city function.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
All right, we have seven yes, one no, so that moves forward. The next section, this is entire, this is amending B, correct, Director?
Correct, that is taking, it, B, Powers and Duties, and subbing the new Powers and Duties, which essentially makes the Park and Recreation Commission advisory only.
All right, is there a motion for this amendment, section B?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, see, no second. That falls off. Section C, there's some amendments into this. Ms. Gerhart, do you have, this is just-
They're adding five years of experience. These are just, yeah, the five years of experience, the Director of Parks and Recreation shall be appointed by the mayor.
Right, so if you fail the first section, you have to fail that part.
All right, well, since this is informal, I won't even call on it.
Okay.
First section failed, and we'll just move on. So, section six point zero four, Other Commissions and Boards, section A, this is eliminating the Board of Health, and replacing it with any board or commissions that requires representation by the City of Barberton, the mayor shall appoint a member with confirmation by a majority of council. Are there any remarks? Is there a motion to move this forward?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Heideck, to amend section A, and add any board or commission that require, or to strike out, the Board of Health, and there's, like, details in here, too, as well, about all the boards and commissions, and then amend it, section A, to say any board or commissions that requires representation by the City of Barberton, the mayor shall appoint a member with confirmation by the majority of council. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Moving down the page, this is subsection B, one, this is striking out the Civil Service Commission, or this ain't striking out this section, but the Civil Service Commission may adopt rules and regulations that establish standards, examination rules and credits, and procedures for appointments and promotions within the Civil Service Commission that differ from those established by the Ohio Revised Code. This would be striking out, provided such rules and regulations are approved by council. Is there a motion for this?
Motion.
Mr. Heideck? Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, see, none? Well, that one's getting scratched off. This would be adding section D, is that correct, Ms. Gerhart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, this would be adding section D, Division of Human Resources, there shall be within the Department of Public Safety, a Division of Human Resources, under the direction of Human Resources Director. All right, the Human Resource Director may serve in another employment capacity within the city. You had, this is just moved from four oh three D to six oh four D.
Um.
Ms. Gerhart?
Clarification, we would be picking blue or pink at this point?
No.
No.
So, I, a couple things, again, I I just repeated what was here, so, the Human Resource Director may serve, let me just start with that first, may serve in another employment capacity within the city. That was to mimic the practice that's now, so you may not want that, I don't know. But, what it's saying is that, under the Civil Service Commission, which is B, and this should be not D, it should be two, but it was D in the other section that I had, and that would be removing, moving human resources under the purview of the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, so it will no longer be under the Department of Public Safety, and they would only be doing the role of a Human Resource Director, because we're no longer combining those roles. So could we eliminate the blue, and just go with the two in the A in pink?
Yes, that was the Charter Commission's recommendation, so I didn't delete that.
Okay.
They're conflicting.
Correct, okay.
Okay, so, see, hearing app. I'm not going to go through all of these, which one do we want?
So what we would like-
Somebody make a motion for one of them.
I would like to make a motion that, under the Civil Service Commission, we are adding a Department of Human Resources, a Director, and then the qualifications for that Director, as listed in A.
Okay, so that, with the two pink sections.
Mm-hmm, and their little bit of a job description is, on the following page, twenty-four, the duties of this role.
Is there a second for this?
Second for the pink.
Second for the pink. What's that?
Rebecca.
All right, a motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mr. Heideck, to go with the second option here, in the pink, there shall be a Department of Human Resources, under the direction of Director of Human Resources. The Director of Human Resources shall report to the Civil Service Commission, this shall be a classified position. And then the qualifications for that position follow on page twenty-three, and continues on page twenty-four of our paper. Is there, are there any remarks for this? All right, clerk, can you call the?
Mrs. Heideck?
I'm sorry, the roll.
What'd she call me, I didn't hear?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. Moving ahead on this, in the blue section, this is section E, this is removing that entire section E.
I I can explain that, I'm sorry. Okay, so, if you go back to page twenty-three, the sub-A, any board or commission that requires representation by the City of Barberton, the mayor shall appoint a member with confirmation by council. What that does is just eliminate all of the different types of boards that are listed in C, because in addition, there's other boards that may require the representation of, for example, like the Metro Board says, a a Barberton person shall be represented, so it's specific, that's what it's saying, it's one requires representation by the City of Barberton, the mayor appoints with confirmation by council, and deletes the Boxing and Wrestling Commission, which nobody knows what that is. So, they just took that out and just said, anytime that's required, the mayor appoints with approval of council, that's why blue comes out.
Okay, so, if we have that, is that something you strike out?
Yeah, it's a strikeout, yep.
Okay, so there's no need to even move forward with that?
No, you have to, because it's in the charter, and we need it removed. Sorry.
Well, if it doesn't-
That's not editorial, that's not editorial.
That's what I was asking, yeah, sorry. All right, is there a motion to strike out section E?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Easterling. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mr. Easterling, to strike out section C, as discussed by Director Miller. Are there any comments? Clerk, can you call the roll on that?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. Moving on, page twenty-five, under Article Seven, this is amending the entire page, section, uh, section seven point zero one, time for holding elections, and section seven point zero two, nominating elections and primaries. Ms. Gerhart, can you-
Sure. So, um, those first two paragraphs that are crossed out, then replaced with a new seven point zero one, that is basically declaring that we would become, all elections shall be nonpartisan, without party affiliation, appearing on the ballot. Then, section seven point zero two is, and Mrs. Miller can help me on this, but basically, if there are more than four people who file for each ward, we would have a primary?
Correct.
So if there were three people who wanted to be on an award, we would not have a primary, and three people would go to the general.
Correct, and that applies to all elected positions.
And that's for your mayor, your Director of Finance, and your Director of Law, and your president at large, all of us.
Correct, and this was a recommendation of the Charter Review Commission.
Okay, so, maybe we would break it down to vote on-
No, it's all one, it's all-
Oh, this is one giant thing.
If you eliminate oh one and oh two, seven point oh one and oh two, and you substitute for the new, the new one, basically, that's-
So if you want nonpartisan, you have to have a heard election, or whatever it's called?
Yes, I suppose.
Okay.
I've never heard of that, but I like that, I guess. Heard election.
Okay, for this section, this actually goes to section zero three, this adds section seven point zero three nomination, seven point four other elections, segment point zero five general.
Can I have a second? Does anybody have a charter with them?
Absolutely.
Oh, the original charter, okay. I think I made a mistake. I think I got, I forgot where to put it.
I do have my clarification.
I'll give it to you.
Here. Up here, she's got it, thank you. No, I was right, okay. I was right, it's all correct, sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Can I ask a point of clar-
Mr. Heideck?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, for a point of clarification. Director, since this changes pretty much everything, can this be changed to, instead of one section at a time, to amend Article Seven as a whole?
I would suggest that, because if you didn't do one of these, it would kind of mess up everything else, correct?
So we could vote on Article Seven?
Yes, the deletion of current seven point oh one and oh two, and the inclusion of seven point one, oh one, oh two, oh three, oh four, oh five.
As one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. Ms. Gerhart?
My question is, in section seven point zero three, no later than four PM, on the nineteenth day before the day of a primary, but we might not have a primary if we don't get more than four people?
Correct.
But that would still be-
No, you, it's only, okay, that, I understand your confusion, but it should be, I'll work on the language.
Okay.
It, if we can all agree on, in substance, this is what we want, I will, this is language, I mean, not for nothing, this is, I think this is Norton language, and it's correct, per the Board of Elections.
Okay, I was wondering if it was a Board of Elections requirement, but if we skip a primary, and everybody makes it into a general, would that change your-
Yeah, then you just don't have a primary. Go ahead, Mr. Heideck.
Yes, thank you. I I should have known you would know.
If you, if you want an example, anybody, okay, so, Counselor Griffin is running for an office, he doesn't have to have a primary this year, but he still had to file as if there was a primary.
Correct.
He had to have it at any time.
Because in case, in case there's a primary, that's why you have to file.
Yeah.
You have to file if there will be a primary.
Gotcha.
If there's not, lucky you.
Because you would never know.
Gotcha, thank you.
You would never know if there's going to be a primary until everyone files.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so we're going to be-
Now that makes sense, it's Board of Election rule.
We're going to be, this next motion is basically amending the entire section seven from elections, changing it to nominations in elections, removing primaries, or party primaries unless needed, and language will follow when the draft is created. So is there a motion to move forward with this modification?
Motion.
Mr. Heideck? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harris? A motion was made by Mr. Harris and second, or, Mr. Heideck, and seconded by Mr. Harris, to move forward with the Article Seven amendments for elections. Are there any comments? All right, clerk, can you call the roll for this, please?
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heideck?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
All right, seven yes, one no, that's moving forward to the committee. All right, last page, I believe, page thirty.
Director, since this changes pretty much everything, can this be changed to, instead of one section at a time, to amend Article 7 as a whole?
I would suggest that, because if you didn't do one of these, it would kind of mess up everything else.
So, we can vote on Article 7?
Yes. The deletion of current 7.01 and 02, and the inclusion of 7.101, 02, 03, 04, 05.
As one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidig. Ms. Gerhart?
My question is, in Section 7.03, no later than 4:00 PM on the 19th day before the day of a primary, but we might not have a primary if we don't get more than four people?
Correct.
But that would still be?
No. You, it's only, okay, that, I understand your confusion, but it should be, I'll work on the language.
Okay.
It, if we can all agree on, in substance, this is what we want, I will, this is language, I mean, not for nothing, this is, I think this is Norton language, and it's correct. Per the Board of Elections.
Okay. I was wondering if it was a Board of Elections requirement, but if we skip a primary and everybody makes it into a general, would that change your-
Yeah, then you just don't have a primary. Go ahead, Mr. Heidig.
Yes, thank you. I should have known you would know.
If you, if you want an example, anybody, okay, so, Councilor Griffin is running for an office. He doesn't have to have a primary this year, but he still had to file as if there was a primary.
Correct.
He had to have it at any time.
Because in case, in case there's a primary, that's why you have to file.
Yeah.
You have to file as if there will be a primary. If there's not, lucky you.
Because you would never know.
Gotcha.
You would never know if there's going to be a primary until everyone files.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
No, it makes sense. It's Board of Election rule.
We're going to be, this next motion is basically amending the entire Section 7 from elections, changing it to nominations in elections, removing primaries or party primaries unless needed. And language will follow when the draft is created. So, is there a motion to move forward with this modification?
Motion.
Mr. Heidig? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harris? Motion was made by Mr. Harris and second, or, Mr. Heidig and seconded by Mr. Harris to move forward with the Article 7 amendments for elections. Are there any comments? All right. Clerk, can you call the role for this, please?
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
All right. Seven yes, one no. That's moving forward to the committee. All right. Last page, I believe. Page 30. This is under Section 11.09, Meetings Open to the Public. And this is more housekeeping, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller, so if you get-
Okay.
In-
Yep.
Correct, if that one thing passes?
Yes. This would be editorial.
Yes, correct.
It would be editorial. So, we can move past that?
Yes.
All right. Section 12.02, Charter Review Commission. This is amending just basically some time in here. So, the mayor shall appoint the Charter Review Commission no later than the last day of January, striking out February and changing that to January. Such appointments shall be confirmed by council. The members of commission shall be seven qualified electors of the municipality and striking out no more than four of whom are members of the same political party. Then, the next change in the first paragraph for that is "The members shall serve without compensation. The Charter Review Commission shall, in meetings open to the public, review the municipal charter in no later than the third Monday in April." Could be striking out June and changing it to April of the same year. Recommend to the council, such amendments, if any, to this charter, as in its judgment, are conducive to the public interest. And then, it will be adding a sentence in there that says, "Council shall hold a public hearing on the recommendations submitted by the Charter Review Commission within 30 days of the submission of the recommendations." If anybody filed that one. It's changing up the time for when they get appointed, when they review, and then adding that council shall have a public hearing with the recommendations within 30 days of-
President, it's also eliminating party affiliation.
You are correct. Okay. This is one of those things that if party affiliation doesn't pass and then we remove this from this section.
You could still have that for your Charter Review Commission regardless of the, if, it was nonpartis, like if they rejected the nonpartisan nature of our elections, you could still have this and it just, so, they just wanted to say it shouldn't matter for the Charter Review Commission.
I got you. Okay. Is there a motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Harris? Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Thompson, a motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to amend Section 12.02, the Charter Review Commission, with all the stuff that we just discussed. Are there any comments? Clerk, can you call the role for this?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
All right. Seven yes, one no. That moves forward and that ends our charter.
Is it-
Role call.
President, I'm sorry. Is it your intention to discuss this at the very next full meeting on next Monday?
This will be discussed in the Rules Committee.
Two weeks from now or one week from now? That's all it's gonna be?
In the Rules Committee.
Two weeks. Thank goodness. Okay.
All right. So, that was miscellaneous and unfinished business. Again, it was a long drawn out thing to try to whittle that down. I would have thought that we would have whittled more down. But it is what it is. So, with that done, communication from the body. Is there anything? Nothing? I don't have anything. So, anything from the department heads? Nothing. All right. Communication from the mayor?
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Change for change will be this, not this Friday, but Friday the 20th at Ignite Brewery, benefiting Magic's Ready to Learn. Hope to see everyone there for that. I'm glad to see legislation pertaining to the placement of trash cans may affect the council, and I appreciate that we can work together on this. The power outage that occurred last Friday affecting parts of the city apartment, so what I heard back from First Energy, it was caused by a large tree limb that fell across all three phases of a power line. When the troubleshooter went out there, they identified the issue, saw the tree limb was a safety issue and way too big for them to take care of, so they had to call some forestry crews in to remove, safely cut, remove the limb from the lines. So, they've got a timeline. Troubleshooter was dispatched at 3:10 PM. Forestry arrived at 5:16 PM. Power was restored. There's over 3,200 residents that were out. And this tree limb was on Eastern Road, so just outside of town. Power restored to about 920 residents, it's just after 6:00 PM, 6:35, additional 600 residents, power was restored. And then, a remaining, just over, almost 1,800 residents at 8:40 PM. What's important is anytime your lights flicker and there's a power outage or something like that, you've got to report, right? They go by data. They may not realize the power is out. It may be affecting you. Could be affecting the entire neighborhood. Could be a time of day where most of your neighbors may not be home, so they don't know that their power is being affected. As we always say, when there's an issue, a safety issue, call the police or they can't do anything about it. Contact First Energy. Even if it pops back on, if you can log that, they collect all that data. And so, it's very important, whether it's First Energy, if there's any outage or anything like that, like I said, just contact them so they can collect that data. When there's other issues throughout town, whether it's issues or damage with Omni Fiber, stormwater, water backup, First Energy, trash recycle, contact my office. We do the same thing. We collect all the data and, you know, when it comes to stormwater, you know, FEMA will come in and say, "Hey, you had a storm. How many people were affected?" And we'll know that a lot of people were affected, but we'll say, "We got five phone calls." Well, that's not enough data for them to do anything. So, the more calls we get, you know, repetitive flooding, those types of things, we can make a case to have assistance. When it comes to trash, recycle, pickup, Omni Fiber, all of these things, again, contact my office. We collect all that information. We're constantly on the phone with them to make sure that they're doing their job and they're restoring property and they're doing everything they're supposed to do per the contract. That's all I have.
Thank you. How are trees, are trees close to lines the responsibility of the tree owner? Or does like an electrical company come and clear out trees if they're too close to their lines?
Yeah. The tree company will make a decision internally if it's too close to their power lines.
Okay.
Really not if it's too close, but if it's growing into the power lines, they will come out about every five years and, and they call it trimming, but they'll-
Butcher.
Free their lines.
Okay. So, the power company is sending that tree company out to make that determination? And then, one more question. With wanting to gather all this data, would there be a way to like add that to reporting a concern on our website? So, like if my trash didn't get picked up, I could just hop on there and send in a report? Would that make it easier on your office than getting a whole couple streets trying to call you? But it would still build it?
Yeah, it would go to our office anyway.
Right.
That complaint, there should be an option. If it's not in there specifically, there should be an option for other, that you can already do that.
Okay.
But KIMBL's pretty good at contacting us, and it may be late in the day, but contacting us saying, "Hey, this section of town got missed because a truck got broke, you know, broke down or something."
Right.
And we try to get that out as much as, as quickly as we can, but sometimes it's late in the day when we're notified.
Yeah. I didn't know if that would help with efficiency and streamlining it for you.
It does hurt. I mean, it tracks everything, but that's not something we can really fix. You know?
Right. It's just more for your, your data collection. Okay. Thank you.
Kind of a silly question. If I had an issue, like the other day, I emailed Mr. Sri about an issue with Omni. Do you want me to CC you on that or does he count as your office?
Yeah, no, we communicate all the time.
Okay, perfect.